Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, January 21st, 2024, 2025, excuse me, at 4:00 PM to order. But before we begin, if there's anybody in the audience who is here for the United Bridge Partners presentation, it's been postponed until next month, February 18th. So you're more than welcome to stay here for the rest of the meeting, but if you're here for that, they're going to be here next week, next month. Okay? Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Niemich?
Here.
Begic?
Here.
Beeson?
Here.
Rep?
Here.
Docket?
Here.
Crete?
Here.
Banaj?
Here. Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. A pleasure to lead.
Almighty God, we ask that you will guide and give leadership to every member of this Board of Commissioners, and we ask that you will give them knowledge and understanding so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion for the minutes of 12:17 and 1:02.
So move.
Support.
Is there any discussion, any corrections? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none. Motion carries. And the agenda approval. Yes, permission.
In addition to the agenda, to add Resolution 2025-17, Four Chaplains Day, February 3rd, 2025. Remove that. Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries. Now I need approval for the agenda amendment.
I move the agenda with the amendment.
Support.
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries. At this time, Mr. Public Input. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board? Please come forward.
Go on once, but you want to come up. Pastor?
Charles Campbell, and I am Chaplain District 10, American Legion, and we are doing our Four Chaplains service again, and we thank you for putting together that resolution. And for those that don't know exactly what the Four Chaplains were, let me pull my notes back up. The Four Chaplains are also known as the Immortal Chaplains during World War II. They were headed to Greenland on what was nothing more than a passenger liner converted. The passenger liner was to hold approximately 350 people, but there were over 900 men going to World War II. And that's when they were surprised. They were being escorted by the Coast Guard Cutter Tampa, Escanaba, and Comanche during the early morning hours of February 3rd. The vessel was torpedoed by a German submarine U-223 off Newfoundland in the North Atlantic. The chaplains helped the soldiers. They had every reason to get off. They had their life jackets and they had lifeboats. Instead, those Four Chaplains, one being Jewish, a Roman Catholic priest, a Methodist minister, and a Reform minister, they opened up the locker and started handing out life jackets to all that they could. Their efforts helped to save over 230 men out of the 904 on that ship. And so, after World War II, there really was no one award that could be, so they created a special Medal of Honor for these Four Chaplains. And there's actually a Four Chaplains Chapel at the United States Naval Shipyard in Philadelphia. And so if you're ever out that way, take time, and if you have children, it's worth the trip because it's definitely educational. And as we all know, if we don't know our history, we are sometimes destined to repeat it. So with that in mind, we once again thank you for putting together the proclamation for this event. It will be held this year. It's moving. It will be at the Linwood, or some know it as the Crump Post of the American Legion. And we're excited. The post has, we had a meeting last night, and in light of me not getting around as well, half a dozen different people in the post are going to take part this year. And so we are very excited about it, and we'd love to have you. You're welcome to come. And I'll leave these up here, and you guys could hand those around. It just is an invitation, and we look forward to seeing some of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice. Public input is closed at this time. Next is Petitions/Communications. We have a few, we have three presentations. The first one is the John Glenn Boys Soccer Team, Resolution Number 2025-01. Jim?
Do you want to say?
Do you want to? Come up here.
Yeah. Come on up, guys.
You can. Okay. Resolution by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive take this opportunity to honor the Banger John Glenn Boys Soccer Team on their unforgettable and historic 2024 season. And whereas with an extraordinary regular season record of 21 wins, zero losses, and two ties, which included winning the Bay County Tournament for a third straight year, beating Bay City Western 1 to 0 in the finals, and the Schwartz Creek Tournament, beating Chestening 3 to 0 in the finals. And whereas with further reason to celebrate, the Bobcats won districts by beating Bay City Western 2 to 1, and then Luddington 3 to 0 in the district final, and securing their first District 2 Boys Soccer Championship in Banger John Glenn High School history, advancing to the state Sweet 16 regional round. And whereas as the team, the Bobcats won their first Tri-Valley Conference title in school history, set the county record for most wins at 24 and most shutouts, 18, by a boys soccer team, compiling an impressive 24-win, 0-loss, 2-tie record through the district finals, which resulted in the Michigan High School Athletic Association ranking the Bobcats seventh in Division 2 in the state. And whereas with a hard-fought 3 to 1 loss to Grand Rapids Forest Hills in the first round of regional play, the Bobcats ended their historic and record-breaking season by garnering impressive victories, which were the result of hard work and team spirit through head coach Brian Scherzer and assistant coaches Jim Lillo and Katie Veet, instilling in their team a sense of camaraderie, sportsmanship, respect for each other, commitment, and the drive to compete at the highest level. And whereas team members Drew Bailey, Landon Beeson, Montoya, Lucas Blossom, Asher Clark, Ben Leland, Dylan Del Amo, Carter Glazza, Wyatt Juski, Landon Kogelman, Braden Lang, Paul Norrie, Trent Phillips, Brady Premier, Ruben Rivera, Arrow Van Wagoneer, Justin Weinger, and Dylan Wood, with great integrity and sportsmanship, honored themselves, their coaches, their family, and their community by competing, completing the regular season and districts with an undefeated record, setting county records along the way. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive offer congratulations to the 2024 Banger John Glenn Boys Soccer Team and their coaches for their achievements, and extend best wishes to the team members and coaches for continued success in all future undertakings.
Thank you. Mr. Barsha, I'd like to come up here also. On behalf of Bay County Board of Commissioners, we congratulate you, each and every one of you. And Banger is my, one of my home districts, that's one of my districts, and I live there. And we're very proud of you guys. You're doing a good job. Keep doing what you're doing, and we'll see what we can do next year. So.
A great season, and I want to also offer our congratulations on behalf of Bay County. We're very proud of you. We know it was a tough season, but you, you really excelled, and put Bay County once again on the map. We're very proud of you, and thanks for all you do, and look forward to great things in the years ahead from each of you. And thanks especially to the coaching staff and all the parents who make that possible as well by supporting you in all of your academic and athletic pursuits. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations. Jim, you want something to say, Jim?
I'm good.
What? (laughing). I'll put you on the table. Take two, Jim. Ready? Yeah. Thank you.
You guys turn the slices, make sure it's warm.
(laughing). Oh, yeah. Different angle.
That's right.
I need a motion to accept.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number two. Michigan Superintendent of the Year 2025, Banger Township Schools Superintendent, Dr. Matthew Schmidt, Resolution Number 2025-02.
Resolution by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas the Michigan Superintendent of the Year Award recognizes a superintendent who has demonstrated exceptional effort and dedication to improving the lives of students and the community. And whereas it is with great pleasure that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive congratulate, congratulate Dr. Matthew Schmidt, the Superintendent of Banger Township Schools, for receiving this prestigious honor in 2025. And whereas the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators selected Dr. Schmidt in recognition of his commitment to student-centered education, dedication to fostering a thriving school community, and leadership within the district and broader educational landscape. And whereas using his real-life experiences as a veteran teacher, principal, and superintendent, Dr. Schmidt has a unique perspective on the challenges faced by many students. And whereas it is this perspective that has fueled his commitment to ensuring that every child has the opportunity to succeed regardless of their background, and his commitment to service that has made a positive impact on the lives of those around him. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive extend their sincere appreciation and thanks to Banger Township Schools Superintendent, Dr. Matthew Schmidt, for his dedicated service.
You got any comments?
Superintendent, sorry, I want to talk. Yeah. So I would just say, this obviously is not all being, it really is a collective effort. I work for a phenomenal district. We have wonderful staff, phenomenal families, and just a high-quality community. I look at Glenn back there, and we work together very closely. More proper the work we do, but we do it on behalf of the people we serve, and if we can just continue to get support from the county, that would be wonderful. But thank you very much for the work on behalf of Banger Township Schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not involved with students, but Dr. Matt, he's been here for 12 years, and since he's been here, it's, he's increased the population, our student count, and everything else. He's done so much good stuff here. I've talked to students, I've talked to parents, and the citizens, and there's nothing to be proud of for having a Superintendent of the Year, our own Banger Township President. So thank you, congratulations.
Banger writes. Any motion?
Motion to adopt and present.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries. Number three, the Four Chaplains Day, Resolution 2025-17.
Resolution by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas on February 3rd, 1943, four United States Army Chaplains aboard the US AT Dorshashur heroically gave their lives in the process of saving others as their ship was torpedoed and sank. And whereas when the supply of life jackets ran out on their sinking ship, Lieutenant George Fox and Methodist Minister Lieutenant Alexander Goody, a Jewish rabbi, Lieutenant Clark Paul Ling, a Dutch Reform Minister and Lieutenant John Washington, a Roman Catholic priest, selflessly gave up their life jackets to those who had none. And whereas according to witnesses who survived the attack, the Four Chaplains linked arms, sang hymns, and offered prayers as they went down with their ship. And whereas more than 600 members of our nation's military tragically passed away that day, including the Four Chaplains, making it known as the second worst sea disaster of World War II. And whereas Congress attempted to confer the Medal of Honor on the chaplains, but was prevented by strict guidelines. And whereas instead, Congress authorized a one-time, posthumous special medal for heroism given by former President Eisenhower in 1961 with the intention of having the same weight and importance as the Medal of Honor. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners encourages and supports the observance of Four Chaplains Day and is honored to hereby designate February 3rd, 2025, as Four Chaplains Day in Bay County.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barsha. 2:39, I move this year from post 18 to 2:39. Out in the front, and the post has been very, very cooperative, and very, very happy with their support. One thing I forgot to mention earlier was, we, the Bay County Honor Guard, we lost Mark Smith, who's been a member of our Honor Guard for years, and also ran the food pantry. That helps a lot of veterans right here in Bay County. It's beautiful, and we get to private, right in the afternoon, 4:35 o'clock, Alex Skorupskis. We want to give him due honor because the Honor Guard is a part of the Four Chaplains, and he'd be there. He's going to be standing there, depending on smart. He's always there. So, we, we, we feel, thank you, I think you guys.
Make a motion to adopt and present.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries. B, Bay County Treasurer, Public Bond Status. Need a motion?
So move.
Support.
This is to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries. Number C, Public Director, Listing of Authorized Department Heads. This is to receive.
Move to receive.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries. Okay, for the reports, committee, committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution Number 2025-3, Jury Systems Incorporated Software Agreement, fiscal year 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Number two, Resolution Number 2025-4, A&amp;D Home Healthcare Incorporated Contract Renewal. I move this resolution.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-5, Blue Cross Complete Agreements for Elevated Blood and Lead Case Management. I move this resolution.
Support. Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution 2025-6, Bid Award Notification for IFB 2024-26, Bay County Waste and Recycling Removal Rebid. I move this resolution.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-7, Payables. I move this resolution.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution 2025-8, Board Analyst/Advisor Recommendation. I move this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Crete.
B, Committee of the Whole, December 10th was canceled. Should be put a full board, so we can go down to C, Board of Commissioners. Commissioner, begin.
You have a long list here for me. Resolution 2025-09, Reports of County Executive, December 2024. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-10, ARPA Revenue Recovery. authorize Bay County Road Commission to enter into intergovernmental agreement with Banger Township for the Cock Hall and River Dredge Project. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Number three, 2025-11, Provision of Health Insurance as Fringe Benefit for Bay County Commissioners. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Niemich?
Yes. Begic?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Rep?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Crete?
Yes.
Banaj?
Yes. Seven yeses and one no. Thank you.
Six.
Six ones, six one. Thank you. Okay. Vaughn?
Resolution Number 2025-12, Concurrent with County Executive's Appointment of Bengal Assessing Services, Keegan Bengal as Bay County Equalization Director. I move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion on this? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Number 2025-13, Concurrent with County Executive's Appointment of Scott Treppkowski as Director of the Bay County Finance Department to serve in the position of Finance Officer. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I'd just like to kind of thank the County Executive and Personnel Director. It's a tough position to find somebody for that position. I know they worked real hard on it, did it. It was channeling to find the right person. But knowing Scott Treppkowski, I think they found the right person, and I think he'll be a real asset to our county and to our staff, so I think it's a good choice.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Mr. Barsha, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to wait until comments from the County Executive, but we are delighted that Scott Treppkowski is joining Bay County staff as our new Finance Director. Scott brings a wealth of experience in the community to his position, and also is very well-qualified. He has a bachelor's degree in finance, master's degree in administration, additional training in leadership. And Scott is currently also serving as Vice Chair of the Bay County, or excuse me, the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, and also as Finance Chair for the United Way of Bay County. And as I say, has been involved in the community a lot. The Treppkowski family is well-known throughout Bay County, and Scott, we're delighted that you accepted the offer and look forward to you, you know, carrying us through for hopefully several years and maybe decades as well of the county, so.
Thank you for the kind words, Jim. I'm really looking forward to working with everybody here in this room. I've been born and raised in Bay City. I lived in the South End my entire life, in Portsmouth Township, so I've been a lifelong resident. I went to Bay City All Saints where I graduated. I have a, my wife, she went to Bay City Central, and then my kids go to All Saints currently. I have a fourth grader and a second grader currently enrolled there. I coach basketball at Bay City All Saints, so I'm pretty heavily involved, as Jim mentioned also, with United Way and the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. So I love this community, and I'm really looking forward to having the opportunity to give back. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-14, Let's see, Benefits of County Administrator Position Hired at the Rate Closest to the Current Rate. I'll move this resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-15, Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency, County Veteran Service Grant, fiscal year 2026. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Yeah, this is an annual grant that we get for the Veterans Department, and helps the funds, the staff down there, and it's been very helpful. Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Number 2025-16, Hiring Attorney in the Office of Criminal Defense at a Higher Rate. I move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Crete.
B, Committee of the Whole, December 10th was canceled. Should be put a full board, so we can go down to C, Board of Commissioners. Commissioner, begin.
You have a long list here for me. Resolution 2025-09, Reports of County Executive, December 2024. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-10, ARPA Revenue Recovery. authorize Bay County Road Commission to enter into intergovernmental agreement with Banger Township for the Cock Hall and River Dredge Project. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Number three, 2025-11, Provision of Health Insurance as Fringe Benefit for Bay County Commissioners. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-10, ARPA Revenue Recovery. authorize Bay County Road Commission to enter into intergovernmental agreement with Banger Township for the Cock Hall and River Dredge Project. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Number three, 2025-11, Provision of Health Insurance as Fringe Benefit for Bay County Commissioners. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Niemich?
Yes. Begic?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Rep?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Crete?
Yes.
Banaj?
Yes. Seven yeses and one no. Thank you.
Six.
Six ones, six one. Thank you. Okay. Vaughn?
Resolution Number 2025-12, Concurrent with County Executive's Appointment of Bengal Assessing Services, Keegan Bengal as Bay County Equalization Director. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion on this? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries.
Number 2025-13, Concurrent with County Executive's Appointment of Scott Treppkowski as Director of the Bay County Finance Department to serve in the position of Finance Officer. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I'd just like to kind of thank the County Executive and the Personnel Director. It's a tough position to find somebody for that position. I know they worked real hard on it, did it. It was channeling to find the right person. But knowing Scott Treppkowski, I think they found the right person, and I think he'll be a real asset to our county and to our staff, so I think it's a good choice.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Mr. Barsha, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to wait until comments from the County Executive, but we are delighted that Scott Treppkowski is joining Bay County staff as our new Finance Director. Scott brings a wealth of experience in the community to his position, and also is very well-qualified. He has a bachelor's degree in finance, master's degree in administration, additional training in leadership. And Scott is currently also serving as Vice Chair of the Bay County, or excuse me, the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, and also as Finance Chair for the United Way of Bay County. And as I say, has been involved in the community a lot. The Treppkowski family is well-known throughout Bay County, and Scott, we're delighted that you accepted the offer and look forward to you, you know, carrying us through for hopefully several years and maybe decades as well of the county, so.
Thank you for the kind words, Jim. I'm really looking forward to working with everybody here in this room. I've been born and raised in Bay City. I've lived in the South End my entire life, in Portsmouth Township, so I've been a lifelong resident. I went to Bay City All Saints where I graduated. I have a, my wife, she went to Bay City Central, and then my kids go to All Saints currently.
Support. Is there any discussion on this? Seen on all in favor?
Aye.
All seen on motion carries.
Number 2025-13, Concurrent with County Executive's Appointment of Scott Treppkowski as Director of the Bay County Finance Department to serve in the position of Finance Officer. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? Yes.
I'd just like to kind of thank the County Executive and Personnel Director. It's a tough position to find somebody for that position. I know they worked real hard on it, did it. It was channeling to find the right person. But knowing Scott Treppkowski, I think they found the right person, and I think he'll be a real asset to our county and to our staff, so I think it's a good choice.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah. If I could, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to wait until comments from the County Executive, but we are delighted that Scott Treppkowski is joining Bay County staff as our new Finance Director. Scott brings a wealth of experience in the community to his position, and also is very well-qualified. He has a bachelor's degree in finance, master's degree in administration, additional training in leadership. And Scott is currently also serving as Vice Chair of the Bay County, or excuse me, the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, and also is Finance Chair for the United Way of Bay County. And as I say, has been involved in the community a lot. The Treppkowski family is well-known throughout Bay County. And Scott, we're delighted that you accepted the offer and look forward to you, you know, carrying us through for hopefully several years and maybe decades as well of the county, so.
Thank you for the kind words, Jim. I'm really looking forward to working with everybody here in this room. I've been born and raised in Bay City. I lived in the South End my entire life in Portsmouth Township, so I've been a lifelong resident. I went to Bay City All Saints where I graduated. I have a, my wife, she went to Bay City Central, and then my kids go to All Saints currently. I have a fourth grader and a second grader currently enrolled there. I coached basketball at Bay City All Saints, so I'm pretty heavily involved, as Jim mentioned also, with United Way and the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. So I love this community, and I'm really looking forward to having the opportunity to give back. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Yes, yeah, both. All in favor?
Aye.
All seen on motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-14, Let's See, Benefits of County Administrator Position Hired at the Rate Closest to the Current Rate. I'll move this resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All seen on motion carries.
Number 2025-15, Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency, County Veteran Service Grant, Fiscal Year 2026. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Yeah, this is an annual grant that we get for the Veterans Department and helps the funds, the staff down there, and it's been very helpful.
Good, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All seen on motion carries.
Number 2025-16, Hiring Attorney in the Office of Criminal Defense at a Higher Rate. I'll move that resolution.
Support. Is there any discussion? Seen on all in favor?
Aye.
All seen on motion carries. That was all I have. Thank you, Mr. Begic. Now we got reports of the County Official, County Executive, Mr. Barsha.
Well, we just, I was just introducing Scott, and we're excited about him joining the staffs under Finance Director. The only thing I have to share with the board is, of course, reminding everyone, we have the State of the Community program. And Dana Muscat, myself, and Glenn Rowley, representing the 14 townships in Bay County, will be making remarks, updating the chamber, and they always get a good turnout, usually 350, 400 people, updating on the progress of our respective roles in the city, the county, and the townships. And so just want to remind everybody, if you're out and about on February 4th at 11:30, starts at the Doubletree. And look forward to another good turnout and hopefully another great event for the chamber. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barsha. Okay, next is Commissioner Comments. Does anybody have any comments from Commissioners? See, now we're going to go to, pardon me? Yes.
I just want to thank Lindsay and Amber and Tiffany for doing the nonpartisan interviewing of Alex Poyer for the Board Analyst position. I think they did a really good job, and we got a really good person, so thank you for your efforts in doing that, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? At this time, it's for public input, the second time. Anyone wishing to address the board here, please come forward. Going once, going twice. Public input is closed. Miscellaneous? Any miscellaneous? Is there any announcements? Yes.
Just want to amplify on Mark Smith's passing. He was a member of the Vietnam Vet America also, Chapter 494, and just did a lot for the community. Village Hall, he had food giveaways, turkey dinners, a great volunteer. He drove us in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in his truck, so we're going to, we're going to definitely miss Mark. And the funeral, the viewing is from 2:30 to 5:00 at Skorupski on Friday, and then the funeral is at 5:00 o'clock at Skorupski on Friday. So, great, great guy. Thank you.
Yes, I remember Mark. He had a food pantry in Ennisville, and he started it with some donations, and he kept going around, and he built it up and all that. That's all he cared about, was helping all the veterans and people that need. So we're going to miss him dearly, especially at the American Legion when he was in Honor Guard with us, so. Okay.
I have an announcement.
Yes.
Former Commissioner Jamie Johnson, who I replaced, his style and log died recently. So I just want, I'll be working with Jamie for quite some time, so I wanted you to know. Ken DuKarsky was his name. His funeral is Friday at Ambrose Funeral Home, viewing on Thursday, funeral on Friday.
Okay.
And the other thing I was going to say is, it might be a good idea to bring Alex up to, for everybody to meet him at some point.
You want to bring him up?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, that's perfectly fine. Alex, come on up. Yes, go introduce yourself.
Yes, hi, everyone. My name's Alex Poyer. I'll be the new Board Analyst. I wanted to echo the thanks for the hiring and onboarding process and all the support throughout the few months. I'm excited, thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Benaschak as well for inviting my grandmother and my aunt today so that they could come and see my swearing-in, which was very anticlimactic, as I told them it was going to be. So, thank you all again, and I really look forward to meeting with everyone and all of the Board Directors as well, and collaborating and working together, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, Jim? I was just going to welcome Alex to, he's a well-known young man who comes from a very distinguished lineage of political leaders in Bay County, and want to thank Carol, the sister, and daughter, and mom, oh my gosh. Well, you didn't mind that. But yeah, we want to say, Alec, you did outstanding work for Senator Daley, and you bring that legislative experience and understanding the role of state government, how it interacts with the county government. And we know you'll be working very closely with Scott, I'm sure, in the Finance Department as the legislative branch, the, you know, Board of Commissioners interacts on developing the budget each year. So welcome, welcome to the team here in Bay County, and we're delighted that another Poyer is going to carry the torch forward here in Bay County in terms of leadership and public service.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now we got the 2025 appointments. I'm just going to go through March. We have Bay Airneck Behavior Health Authority, three, three-year terms expiring. We got Chris Gerard, Robert Polak, and Richard Byrne. Then there's one expiring, a three-year term, expiring 3/31/26, that's from Reece. Yeah, Marie, Marie Reece. Okay, then we got one in June, but I don't want to go all through that, so. Amber, is there any for close session?
There is.
Okay.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.